Good evening, everyone. This is the Select Board meeting for November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six P M. We're in the Land Use Room. Present are Chairman Jason Perron, myself Diane Gale, Vice Chair, Clerk Doug Mogul, Assistant C A O Nadine Signoni, and C A O Nicole Parker. Um, I guess we're going to start with Pledge of Allegiance. And Marcus, could you?
Sure. We honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Yes. Yes. Uh, we are going to have a moment of silence for Eleanor Bates, who was a former member of the Finance Committee, and also for Mrs. Barbara?
Yes.
Barbara Pulverari, um, the namesake of our animal control shelter. So if we could have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. And then we'll go to public comment. If there's anybody in the room who has a public comment, yes, ma'am.
Where do I go? Do I have to go over the microphone?
Uh, if you can shout and they can hear you.
I can shout.
Okay. Just your name.
My name is Pat McMahon. I live at thirty Laurel Lane. And I'm here on behalf of the Cultural Council. We are working with the Senior Center, and we will be putting on a funeral. Poor Mortimer Stifler has passed away. And he's, we have his funeral on December fifth at one o'clock. It is, it is comedy, to say the least. Anyway, you are all welcome. Um, I, I am fortunate enough to be playing his wife. And, and the poor man had a lot of problems. So I encourage you to come and find out about Mortimer's problems. And I brought some, some flyers for you, if I may give them to you.
This is interesting.
It is interesting. It's fun. And it's put on, there are three, it's a, it's what they call a senior readers play. And it is put on by seniors, three of whom are from Southwick. And while we read our scripts, we've been practicing and we know how to, no, we're here. We, we now know how to, um, express things while we're reading. So I will leave it at that. Um, I hope you all can come. It's at one o'clock in the afternoon because it is a Senior Center for Seniors, but it's for everybody. And it's free. I think that's it. Any more commercials, any questions?
One more time. What's the date and time, please?
December fifth at one P M.
One performance only.
One performance only unless by over rousing success, we have demands for a second performance.
Thank you.
I think that's it. I'm off to the library, which, oh, by the way, another new topic. The library now has thirty-four baskets and gift cards on display. Raffle tickets are being sold. It's a major fundraiser for the friends of the library. And that will conclude on December eleventh with a hot chocolate bar at five thirty in the afternoon. My commercials are done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMahon. Say hello to Michael. Need the library.
Oh, good.
Is there anybody online with a public comment? No, shout out?
I would like to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, please.
Well, they were doing online, so I didn't want to.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
My name's Pat O'Neal. I'm with the Southwick Historical Society. And I wanted to let you know that our.
Thank you.
Granite Monument is done.
Yay, excellent.
Here's a picture of it. Uh, we're gonna have Southwood make some bigger pictures, but that's all we could do today for, for you folks.
Oh, excellent.
And, uh, we have been, we've been collecting funds for it.
It's right on the road, right?
Near, uh, the, what's now Congamond Cafe.
Yeah.
And, uh, the total, the total cost was fifty-one hundred dollars. And we, most of that was from sales of this book that Bob Madison wrote. We reached, the Southwick Historical Society receives the royalties from it. And we have a separate account that we take care of, and, uh, most of the money came from that. And, um, Bob Madison designed the image that you're seeing. And, uh, we're still selling these. And Jason was kind enough to help us by digging the hole for it. And we would like to give you that as a gift, as a thank you gift. It's not much of a thing, but, uh, we appreciate your help.
Wonderful. Good job.
Nice work.
Thank you. Thank you. And, uh, somebody brought, uh, our Historical Society programs, the new programs.
Thank you.
If you'd like them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
My name is Lee Hamburg. I'm from the Southwick Historical Society. And I just wanted to say thank you to Jason for, uh, his fine job at the excavation of the hole for the monument. And I also wanted to, um, shake your tree a little bit about, uh, the potential for a special town meeting, which is needed in order to approve the funds from the Community Preservation Committee of, for the acquisition or for the conservation restriction, uh, purchase of seventy-four College Highway. I do know that the CPC is meeting this Wednesday and that they have, uh, will also be discussing and perhaps approving, I don't know what the status is, uh, the restoration of the facade of the Town Hall, which is in need of, uh, rejuvenation as it slowly falls apart. And, uh, I hope that a special town meeting is, uh, called very shortly because, uh, we are under, uh, significant time constraints in that respect for this project. Thank you.
I spoke with the landowner who stated that they would wait until annual town meeting for the purchase.
We have a P N S that has a live time limit.
And it's not April. It's January for us.
Mm-hmm. Um, they indicated that they would hold off and wait until they, they know that we were having an annual town meeting, that it's, you know, not to set a precedence to have a special town meeting for one item. And with that understanding that they were going to wait and allow the purchase to happen later.
Okay.
So do you need to get a new purchase and sale agreement?
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll call him again tomorrow.
You call? Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Marcus Phelps, twenty-eight Depot Street. Uh, a couple of years ago, I was Town Planner and also served on the planning board. So I see on tonight's agenda, you have a Town Planner position. And, uh, I'm certainly interested in that. And if it's going to expand to be such as a Director of Planning and Development, Economic Development, I think that's a very logical connection. There's other communities in the area that do operate that way. Uh, many times when I was the planner, folks would come in looking for property to develop or they had questions about zoning and where can I put a building or business? So, uh, the planner often is involved in economic development. So I certainly would, uh, encourage that. And if there's anything I can do to help out in the, uh, position description or whatever, I don't have many contacts anymore, but I'm sure Pioneer Valley Planning Commission probably has some model position descriptions, and I know Agawam has a Director of Planning and Development. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Tim Foster with the thirty eighth Golden Road. Actually, here a couple of weeks ago, I remember. Uh, reason for coming back is, uh, we'd like to get, if possible, some more clarity as to what's going on with the A and B situation with the town. Uh, I'm, I'm hearing all different stories, so I'm really hoping that tonight you can provide some clarity as to where this is at, where it's going, what the timeline is. It's my understanding that this, when this was developed, it was to be presented to the Attorney General for a pool. The question is, was that done? Is it done? Second, where, where, where is the town at with this specifically? I've heard talk that we don't know who the owner is. I find that absolutely amazing. I really do. I think the town knows who owns everything. If I don't pay my water bill, you know who I am. If I don't pay my tax bill, you know who I am. So I, that response of it being very difficult to know who the landowner is, don't take this the wrong way, but I think there's nothing more to delay than that. So I just would like to know what steps have been taken since we've spoken last.
Do you want to address it? Do you want to address that?
You go ahead, Paul.
Um, so after you came in, I met with Kyle, with the Building Inspector, who has this under his umbrella. And I mean, to preface this, there is a bylaw in place, and there was some, um, revisions to it this past annual town meeting that has to stay with the Attorney General until January second. And I've spoken with the clerk about the town clerk, who kind of is the keeper of all of the code, the, the code book, that, you know, even things that are just pending, we should have it somewhere. So it's not up there right now. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, and with that, Kyle did some digging and found several homes that were listed on the short-term rental websites. And so for what he found, he has just sent out certified letters to all of the landowners, all of the owners today. Um, you know, basically cease and desist, and you have to fill out the application, and you need inspections, et cetera. So he, he sent all, to all of the addresses, including the bylaw and his letter of cease and desist.
A public letter or what I have to?
No, it's, well, you have to request it because nobody knows that you want it until you request it, but it is public document. You can call the Building Department tomorrow. Um, I even have a copy of it, a copy, so I could give it to you. Um, and it is, uh, it is a bylaw and it is allowed. It just needs to be managed and monitored. So that will be happened, that will happen going forward.
Okay, fair enough.
And please feel free to reach out to me anytime.
I appreciate it very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else with a public comment? Anybody else online, one more time? Okay, moving on. Uh, under new business, we have to accept two donations totaling three hundred dollars. Thank you. You're gonna be like, you're unreliable. Uh, from C Lecky from Southwick, Mass., total of one hundred dollars, and from Jay Wigglesworth from Southwick, Mass., two hundred dollars. These are donations to, to the Pulverary Southwick Animal Shelter. So need a motion to accept those?
Make that motion. I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
We are also accepting a donation request for the library gift account, fifty dollars from Frank and Jean Starzis.
Make the motion to accept that donation. Second.
Roll call vote.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Then, um, so sorry, I need to be frozen. Uh, we have a request from the Southwick Clerical Union. They would like to request taking a half day off before Christmas and a half day off before New Year's. And combining those two into a full day off to be used Thursday, December twenty-sixth. I think that's customary.
Customary.
Yes, okay. Uh, do we need to actually vote on that then? Okay, so motion.
Uh, make that motion to allow the Clerical Union to take their two half days and turn them into a full day for Thursday, December twenty-sixth.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
All right, then we have a change to the H C A language. What we did submit, the, um, C C C, although it is not under their jurisdiction to dictate how we deal with our property taxes, they chose to object to our clause on that. So we're just going to strike that one phrase, and the rest stays intact, and it was all approved. So we're just gonna re-sign.
Okay.
Those.
I don't think you need to vote at all.
We had already voted.
Yeah, so if you don't mind just signing. Last page, I'm literally naked.
Can you read the change section, please?
Yeah. Um, somewhere. I can, I know what it is.
There was a part in the old H C As that, in the original ones, was both parties and, and were in agreement that they wouldn't sue each other. And apparently, the Cannabis Control Commission doesn't like to have two parties enter into a contract willingly, so they wanted to be heavy-handed and struck that portion of legally binding contract. But it was, it was, and it was around property taxes and something else.
It was under local taxes.
Do you want me to read it?
I, I don't have.
Because it's not in there.
I know, we struck it.
I can read it, though.
Oh, you have it right there?
Yeah.
Neither the company nor its landlord shall object or otherwise challenge the flexibility of such property and shall not seek a nonprofit or other exemption for paying such taxes. And the company agrees it shall not transfer any real or, or personal property to a charitable organization within or outside the municipality.
So that's the part that was removed. Everything else stays the same.
So that's section was struck.
Yeah. And it, for our council.
Yeah.
After the request of C C C. So that's.
Yes, they returned it with that objection and.
And Town Council just struck the section.
Yes, that phrase of that section. And I did talk to him about it because I still objected. It's not their jurisdiction to tell us how to deal with our property taxes. Um, but he said, should they, um, change their tax, their, their, if they, should they change their tax exempt organization? They have changed their organization and have to refile with the C C C anyway, which means they would have to re-submit to us as a new entity anyway. It's a new management team, a new structure for their entity. So it would be viewed as a new application.
Unless the triple C changed their rules and allow everybody to transfer it to be a nonprofit and we're all sunk.
Exactly.
Because lord knows the triple C hasn't changed their rules as we go.
And council says we would have other remedies if that were the case, which I didn't get into specifically. He assures me we would have other remedies for our protection on that. So, um. It is on the last page, isn't it?
Yeah, the very last page.
Oh, we only had one, we only had you sign it anyway, right? Oh, no, we.
No, there was three. There's three, but Doug wasn't here.
I, I, you're on. Oh, good, keep up with past practice. Fair enough.
We're just signing, hold on. And it's coming down to you.
Oh, yeah, no need. Fine.
I'm not with you. And then give me this one. Yep, and then we can move on to Select Board Office configuration.
So in the summer, when I first started and everything was being reconfigured, um, you would ask, you know, sort of give you a recommendation on how, you know, the staff should be in the office and what we should, you know, how should, we should be staffing it. And with the addition of Margaret and Nadine has all of the H R, um, roles and a lot of the, um, other administrative, um, H R roles, like health insurance and workers comp and all of that kind of stuff. Um, you know, I feel like the three of us can handle the office really well. And so I don't think that we need to have any more staff, but I would like, I support the, um, increase that Mr. Landis had recommended for Nadine in the summer before I got here. So I do recommend that increase to ninety-eight. Bring your consideration. And we have about fifty-five thousand dollars that I've identified over here and, and, um, and some part-time salaries and other salaries in our department, but at ten thousand.
Yep, that was this one. Back then. Good call. Back discussion. Back then. From Chief Landis.
Oh, yeah.
I have no problem. I don't think you need to vote. I assure you, I'm just, as new as I am, want to bring it to your, uh, for your consideration and not mine.
I know we were waiting to hear you settle in and we wanted to hear your take on everything, so.
Seems things are running smoothly. Even with the transition of Lisa, it seems things are running very smoothly.
Luckily, we still have her as a resource on the stairs.
I, I think you need to bifurcate the, the discussion into two halves. Because I think the, and, and we talked about this previous, even prior to you joining, about the organization of the, the Town Hall. Select Board Office was, we kind of let it skate, knowing we're going to go into a transitional period. And kind of let the new C A O decide how that walk list is organized, rather than hire two full-time administrative people or however many people, administrative people, and then have the new C A O decide that that's too, too many, too little, too whatever. And I think when you guys have found a very good balance, and I think it was totally within, uh, your role to try to, you know, figure out how that's gonna, how that should run and how you think that office should run. And I think it's worked out great. The other thing, I'll be very honest, I have reservations because there's an existing agreement that was executed that still has time to run. And I think it's an interesting precedent, um, as we discussed previous, to alter that in the middle of said agreement, unless there we review the job description and update the job description accordingly. And that would change the overall terms of the, of the agreement that would warrant an out-of-budget cycle change to the compensation for the role. And that goes for anyone. I think we just need to have that, we need to have that conversation in better detail. And I know what Chief Landis was getting at, and I, and I, I don't disagree with it. I just think it, it kind of sends the wrong. It sets a bad precedence for if, if you have an agreement with somebody, someone or anyone that unless, without changing the job description that we're gonna change, you know, there were other milestones in the agreement that were met and done. But if we're gonna change the role, then you change the job description and then you, you know, part of that updating the job description is the compensation section of that agreement. So it's not a personal issue. It's just, I think we need to be very deliberate in how we go about that.
Okay. When were you thinking you wanted to implement that?
Um, well, what we'll do is go back and redo the job description and see if, you know, it's something that you're willing to open up. And if not, her contract is up when it's up, and then we discuss it. But I'll work on the other side now, and it might warrant, uh, an executive session discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
And nothing wrong with having a successor agreement that takes that into account, right? You can, you can update an agreement and you could even put years on it after that, right? And, and as part of the, the, the overall negotiation for that is, okay, this, this, this deal had a year to run. Okay, we're gonna update the job description. Here's a new three-year contract that's gonna supersede the existing one. And you run from it.
Sure. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, Town Planner position.
So, do you want me to go?
Yeah, it's yours. So I'm, I'm sorry. Do you want her to go?
I turned it over to you today, so. Like I said, I feel all sorts too, so.
So as, you know, we've been discussing that John has a new position, and I'm sure he's very anxious to move over there. Um, working on getting a new job description out to be more comprehensive, to include economic development work, um, and to really professionalize the position. Um, I created this new job description with Nadine, um, but I, you know, it's really, I have to, I don't know if it's credit or criticism, but I have to take it because I really was, I, this is me. So, um, I just envision what I think an excellent planner slash Economic Development Director would be as I'm seeing, you know, how the town is transitioning and modernizing. And, um, you know, some, there's, we talk about revisions to the, to the zoning. Um, you know, all the issues that have come up with economic development. We want to really put all those together with the Master Plan and Implementation Committee, the Economic Development Committee. And I think this position will play a pivotal role in the future of the smart zoning and, and, and the planning department. Um, and the person that I envision will be, you know, really in tune with zoning, with municipality, you know? I fully expect it to be a very professional position and full-time. Um, I, 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 uh, I didn't get any feedback from the planning board. I sent it and I had asked some questions, but I, I didn't get any feedback. So I, I believe that everybody would be behind it. I had randomly saw, seen, saw Jessica Thornton, who expressed, um, you know, some excitement about having somebody full-time and really delving into a lot of the, um, you know, development in town. So as you can see, there's a comprehensive job description here. Do you want to have a, you know, break it apart or, you know, what you think you want to see, what you don't want to see? Um, what could be included? Whatever you guys think, um, I'm happy to revise it again with recommendations. It's three pages, so it's not, it's not chump change.
It's not like.
It's not. But I think, again, I think it's important that we make sure that this position includes all of this to be able to really encompass what needs to be done in a, in a, you know, municipal planning, zoning, economic development position.
She, she all know I like it. I've been an advocate for this and.
This was something I asked.
Interviews, I asked her about these kinds of things.
I remember.
I, I was hoping it was gonna be under a C H, C A O umbrella, which if this person reports to her, then it does. Um, I'm all in favor. I have some additions scribbled out here, but.
There's some red marks on there.
Yeah, changes.
Yeah.
Um, well, this is, when I first got on, one of the first things I remember asking Mr. Steinhardt is, do we have an Economic Development Coordinator? That was, you know, that's, we're Southwicks right there at the cusp. I mean, we're.
We're at Growing Pains, and it needs a cohesive hand steering it to me.
Oh, and then, I mean, he, I asked him, so who's, who sells the city? And he's like, well, you can do it. And I'm like, okay, or town, excuse me. Um, and I, I did a little bit of research and some reaching out and wasn't, was had some stuff, but this is, I'm way, this is something I one hundred percent agree with and can really support one hundred percent. I think it's, it's an eventuality. I think we have to. I've read through that. I, I don't have nearly the number of notes you have, but I have some notes to come back to the board with and, um, you know, obviously we have to, once again, kind of along the theme here, it's got to put it in the budget cycle and get it bought in because it's obviously going to be an upgrade. Um, in the position and an upgrade in the comp and everything else that goes with it. And we got to put that back into the budget and make sure it makes, uh, no pun intended, economic sense. You know, it is. It, it has a lot of potential. It has some pitfalls to it too, but I think, um, you have to develop kind of a comprehensive strategy around the development position to make sure that you are taking the right steps. To conservatively grow the town, right? As, you know, you need to do that. You need to have a plan in place and then you, you know, the M P I C and, and whatnot is going to be a key role in that. Um, that endeavor because you can see when, you know, you, we've had people approach us. We've approached other folks about expansion or, or whatnot. And then you're subject to, um, the purest form of government we have, which is open town meeting. So that's kind of a check and balance against it as well. So, uh, we'll come back in a week or so with, with, you know, further discussion on that. And then we, as we start, you know, we're not very far from heading right into budget season where you're going to figure out how you're going to pay for it.
Yeah, there's twenty-eight thousand dollars there now, so I would expect probably fifty thousand dollars more to get a qualified person.
And it's going to be a tough bill.
There's a lot of planners out there.
It'd be easier to get this than an assessor.
It will be, most definitely. Um, so, um, you know, the other, the other component of this is John Garter, who has another job, you know? So, you know, he's just kind of in limbo, really wanting to go start his other job. Um, why we keep him here? So that, that's part of it too. Okay, great. Well, I will look forward to those comments to incorporate.
Okay. Thank you for jumping on that. Getting that going, conversations. Um, CPC application. Um, one had said Sabrina Kooler had something on that.
Um, no, this is from us. This is from the, the select board office.
Oh, that one. Okay.
Is, um.
Oh, that was under.
Russ is here to be able to talk about it. I'm sorry, that one. Yep.
Hello, Eric.
Hi, Dan.
So, um, this started back with Carl. Uh, in regards to the facade, the historical facade of the building, some water issues and some ADA issues with the ramp that were currently on waivers, I guess, but. So, uh, did the application, I'd sent you all copies. Um, we've been back and forth a few times. The question becomes what, how do you want to approach it? So, and what is the ask from the C B CPC? So you, you would have the option of possibly the whole project, which is estimated to one point two-ish million. Um, or at this time going for the, trying to go for the architectural fees. So that you can go out the bid, get a real, real true cost of what it, what's involved in this. Uh, you need this sort of a special architect that's involved in historical restoration. Um, the original thought in talking with Carl was that there were, um, the hope for an annual or an, excuse me, a special town meeting in the fall. So that if this was accepted, we could go out to big, go through the process, hire an architect, go through that process, start to develop the plans and have true numbers that would probably by the May town meeting would be kind of aggressive, but at least you would have it in place so that in Carl's plan was that something rolled off the books. Um, that, that might be bonded today within two or three years. If it's, you're ready to go, and then this could fit into the, the bonding cycle if, if needed. If you weren't going for the full thing. So the real question is, what do you want to go for? Architectural fees or the whole gamut? Um, and like the gamut would be based on what the roof architect estimated things to be. But it's not apples to apples of, and especially with pricing these days, I, I, I wouldn't have a good gut feeling about it. So I'm here to discuss that.
Is there any estimate on the architectural fees?
So architectural fees are usually ten to fifteen percent. So if you're figuring out a million dollar project, you're looking for, you know, fifty thousand or a hundred.
Hundred, yeah, hundred fifty-five in here.
Yeah. Again, that's, that's a throw in a number at it.
And we are going for historical funds to do this work.
Correct. So even on, there's been some back and forth on part of it is historical, part of it is not, but I'm going to say probably eighty percent of it or seventy percent of it is all historical because even if you're dealing with the Mason area, and I was just having a discussion with Lee, even if you're dealing with the Mason area, the Mason area restoration for waterproofing has to still be under historical guidelines. So we can't just go water seal it. It has to be, you know, there's a whole category for all of that. So my thought was it seemed the, the easiest and the best would be go for the architectural fees through CPC. Once we know what we have to deal with, we address that at that time. Whether it's bonding, town meeting, CPC again, revisit CPC for partial, all like, you know, all those things are on the table at that point, but without a real record, you don't really know. Um, again, does it have to be done tomorrow? No, but it, it's something that should be on the, on the radar and you, you can see visually it's, you know, the stuff's starting to fall apart.
I would be, like, you know, the, it makes sense. You, you don't know what you don't.
That, that was my understanding from walking around a few times with Carl. That's what he had intended to do was go for the architectural fees first, get it fine tuned.
Right.
And then go back once we had that for the second part of it to do the work. So. That made sense.
Always that.
There's always that. And I think a lot of this was, we knew a, a lot of it, but a lot of it was revealed while the roof was off the building and we added some water.
Surprises, yeah.
Yeah, we found several swimming pools. We didn't know that we had. Um, yeah, because best way to solve a drought is take the roof off the town hall, by the way, because it didn't stop raining for forty days and forty nights.
Or put a new one on, then you get a drought.
It hasn't rained since.
Buy a new snow blower, it'll never stop.
Lord. But yeah, I mean, I think, I think the best way to go about it is to, is to go for the architectural and then figure out what the total scope is. Then you go back for a bigger issue with CPC and see how you're going to approach it with firm costs. You know, they much, in most of their projects, they like to have fairly well delineated costs going in as to what it's going to, what it's going to be, right? They, there's been some exceptions to that policy, but for the most part, and especially something with a big ticket like this. You know, it's part of the obligation we have as a town to protect this historical building. It was a decision made prior to any one of us being here. I think. No, I didn't mean it that way, but you know.
I did. Very proud of it. Yeah.
Putnam spoke about this, you know, um, at previous events, um, you know, they had the option, I guess it's probably close to thirty years ago now, was knock it down, build a town hall. And the town at that time voted to preserve this building and convert it to this use. And when you have a building of this age, this, this is the kind of thing that happens. And look, this is a beautiful facility. It's very well maintained. It's very well kept. It's a great. It's well used, used by members of the community, not just, you know, for board and committee meetings, the auditorium, the senior center. It's kind of a central point for interaction with the government and town. So obviously we have a, we're duty bound to protect it and preserve it as best we can and utilize it the best we can. So I think that, you know, and Carl had, this has kind of been a project at the end of, uh, Carl's tenure and to go and I think we, we need to go through and, you know, be very deliberate as to how we do it. Obviously the roof project that I, I jokingly called it the Carl Steinhardt, you know, memorial roof because it was, that was a project that he steered everybody to. It needed to be done and he needed to leave this select board along the way to get us to getting it done. Um, and, you know, we ended up having to bond that project and, and go through that process to get that done. And it turned out to be quite expensive by the time once you took the roof off and started down the path of the HVAC and everything else. But it extended the life of, of the facility itself and protected the contents thereunder, including the people that work here. This is a furtherance of that. So my take on it is I think we need to go in front of CPC to get uh, the funds to, to do the analysis and then go, you know, make it very clear that we'll be coming back to CPC for that, you know, the, the larger project under the historical portion. And it's up to the CPC, by the way, and the town meeting, to allocate funding from what funding buckets, because they, they take ten, ten, ten and leave eighty or seventy percent in general and reserve. So even though it's a historical project, they may choose to bond it. They may choose to do something with it out of general and reserve, but that's within their purview as, as an elected and appointed board.
So their next, is this ready to go to them? As long as we make that.
Yeah, I would, it's on the agenda for Wednesday. On the, on their agenda for Wednesday. And I don't mind bringing it.
So who would present that was the next question?
I don't mind. I've been working on it. I just would need, I assume it'd be Nicole's signatures. The old one was Carl's. Determine the number. If it's the one fifty-five we want to go for, then those are the two key ones. I'll have an application for her to sign in the morning and I'll put the package together and get them to Sabrina. We've already talked about it a little bit.
Yep.
Sabrina.
Yep.
I, I would propose that we vote on that as a board, that that's, that's the direction we've chosen to support. I mean, it adds credibility to the application in front and they're not going to meet on this this week, right? This will go into there when their next meeting is, whenever that's going to be.
It'll be discussed. It'll be presented. I don't know how they work, so.
When is their meeting?
Wednesday.
Okay. They wouldn't have enough time under the O M L. It'll be posted on their agenda.
Oh, it's on their agenda.
It is.
Oh, it already is. Oh, well, then that's fine. Then we can go ahead.
Place holder, yeah.
But we, we could cert, I would, I would propose, I'd make that motion if you're looking for one, whoever's chairing this meeting at this time. Um, I'll, I'll put forward that motion to endorse a CPC application for the architectural engineering fees for the town hall, uh, whatever I want to call it.
Of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Hundred fifty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Jason Pearl, aye.
Dan Gal, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Because we minutes wouldn't be out. Is it all right if Nicole writes a cover letter to say that you voted on it tonight?
It happened. Okay.
Cool. Thank you. See you in the morning.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, then we have a notice of revised meeting date, the South Park Tolan Regional School District. Um, Budget Roundtable. They were kind enough to reschedule that so that we could attend. It is now Wednesday, December fourth at five thirty PM in the Powder Mill School Library. Uh, then any other new business? Me?
Second.
Um, Nicole, you had something that you wanted to bring up as well?
The old, old business.
Oh, that was old business.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it is old business. Okay. While he's looking up, Nadine?
And then.
And nothing else? Anything? Okay. All right. Old business, revised surplus policy. Again, you can chat on that.
So, um, there's, it's been brought to my attention that there is some surplus vehicles that need to go and, um, you know, again, I think it's been said and known enough that I have to live off policy, procedure, rules and laws and regulations that I try to know how to make them up. And so I went into the code and found the surplus equipment, um, policy. Maybe it's not in the code. It's probably just in the policy handbook. And, um, it's, you know, pretty light and the law's changed since then. So I just kind of revised it and I, um, sent you also the M G L that went with it. So if you'd like to revise it, um, that's great. If you don't and you'd like to leave it at the way it is, that's fine too. I just wanted to kind of update it and bring it to your attention. And with it has, um, you know, the department that would be requesting the surplus, uh, there's now a form where they would be able to forward, you know, me the, you know, which department, what are you getting rid of? What year is it? How many miles is it? You know, instead of just, you know, randomly telling me at a meeting that, hey, I have a couple of cars or I have this, you know, a little more information so we can have it centralized and ready to go for when we can have an auction or whatever it is to dispose of surplus property. It does not have real property because that's governed under a different law.
It certainly expanded from the prior policies, Nate. And defined, which I thought was very good.
It's, I think it's makes sense to kind of fall in line with vast general law anyways.
Yeah, I said it, at least updated it to the current decade soon. Of regulations that. So we must vote to adopt this amended policy.
If that's what you want to do.
I'd make the motion to adopt the amended, uh, surplus property policy.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Jason Pearl, aye.
Dan Gal, aye.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Just jumping back to other new business, there was a, just a notification from CPC of the conservation restriction. Were we supposed to just note receipt of that?
Yeah, I think. I think it just, somebody put it in there. I don't necessarily know that it needs to be in there, but I think it's just, um, yeah.
Just to notify us if, that it's going to go on the warrant.
It'll be, it'll be, I'm CR.
Okay. As part of that historical society.
Yeah.
Just one note on, not, it's tangential to that because this was what Lee and, um, Mrs. Odion were talking about tonight too. Can we close out the loop on that? Between either the, the seller and the town as buyer that would put it in writing that they're willing to extend the.
I wrote it down.
The P N S, right.
Because I did drive by and the sign is still up. So.
Oh, sure. And but if it, they have a P N S, but if it is going to expire and they've agreed that they would extend it, so we should just get it in writing that they agree to extend it.
Okay, um, other old business? Jason, do you have anything?
Uh, I saw the email from Sabrina regarding the L P. Again, we're in, we're in a holding pattern until that legislation comes across. Uh, it was, it read for the third and final time. It's a little waiting on for that.
You mean the conservation commission to be like?
The L P P, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But with this, I, uh, you know, reached out to Randy, who was working with Lee Corvus, the D B W director at Southfield. Um, because what, you know, was given our recommendation from council is that we need to memorialize this. Fine, then it's there and it's, it wasn't malicious. No, you, nobody meant to put it on private property in Massachusetts. However, it's there.
Talking about the same thing.
We're talking about three different things at the same time.
So that my, what my old business situation is just a late permitting process. That's kind of in a standby mode. I know what you're talking about.
Okay. Um. Okay. So that's the update on that?
That's the update on the.
Okay, so now you're talking about the drainage.
I'm talking about the letter that we received from conservation. Um, that, you know, they're working. Within the buffer with no permit and that they were, uh, it was suggested to them to treat it like any other violation, however, they understood. The, you know, complicated nature of what's happening right now, so to just go and start finding or, you know. Circumventing the work that we're trying to do to make this amicable with partnership in another state. And so, you know, I just reached out to Southfield again, I spoke with Colin Mall. Who is going to reach back out to the DPW director because they were putting the language together. Um, to, uh, to make sure that they can, they take care of the maintenance and they do any of the work that needs to be involved in this and. That they get the property rights, you know, the, um, the secure the rights to be able to work on that land from the Beach Association. Whoever private industry owns it, private landowner owns it, and, um. And so, you know, just to say, hey, are you working on that? You know, we're not gonna, we don't wanna incur any legal costs because you put it here, so. We, you know, I wanted you to write it up, we'll have our legal review it, and then, um, you know, they'll, we'll have this agreement in place. So, uh, they're gonna get back to us and I was just going to ask you if. I can just let conservation know, you know, the update, this is what we're doing, we're waiting, we're, we're gonna try to do this amicably. Um, and that I do feel, and I did say this to South, Southfield today to Colin Mall. That they should still come in front of conservation with documentation, with plans, with everything, so that's, you know, even though. There has to be, there, you know, there has to be so they know where, you know, what's happening, what it is actually doing, you know, what? What did you put that in there for, what is it, you know, all, all of that, so, um, you know, so conservation can still review it.
Because they know their conservation rules are different than ours too.
Yeah.
It doesn't need ours, because it's in.
Absolutely, all of that, yes, so they can still review it, you know, they should still go in front of them, even though it's built. And show them all the plans that they used and, and what, what it is there for. Um, but we're trying to be friendly neighbors and just work through this issue. Without giving them fines and things like that. So you're okay that I reply to conservation about this?
I have no objection, I think, you know. It was, I, I brought it up to the chair while he was here at our other meeting, like, that was the elephant in the room to me was. That. Forget it was another jurisdiction, but there was work done in the town of Southwick. That close to the lake or body of water. Um, and I would just ask, you know. I'm all for intergovernmental cooperation. But we have to treat, we can't treat them very desperately than we would treat someone else who. Dug five feet from Congamond Lake and drained a driveway into the lake. They, they have to look at that. And so, yet they, and Southfield deserves the opportunity to come in. And present to conservation that, hey, we thought we're in Connecticut, subject to these rules, because. We, all three of us stood on that land and none of us could agree what state we were in, in the distance of, between Jason and myself, right, so. Until, I completely get where they were, might have been confused as to what state they were operating in. But they, they owe it to the, to our conservation to come in and explain what, what they did over there and how they're going to. Either rectify it or maintain it so that it doesn't become a problem.
Yeah, and there was some rumor that. This, the conservation commissioner was gonna make them remove it completely, and, you know, I, I hadn't heard that, so I don't even know where these rumors come from, but that's why I say. You know, can you just contact me instead of going on rumors, just can we keep this communication open? So I'll be waiting to hear from Southfield in the next week or so.
What, what Mr. Morgan said, when I talked about earlier today, you know, is just we needed to determine who.
You know, what are they gonna leave it to us, and then is it in right, is it proper, all of the things, so. Make sure that we're covered.
Um, I had just an update on the North Pond Pass Force, the bylaw. The proposed bylaw for the comprehensive parks and recreation areas. They did a review on the enforceability. And for any conflict with mass general law. And, um, they made it a little bit longer, just throwing in a few more, uh, definitions, basically.
They, they town council.
Yes, um. And then everything else, there, there's one other thing they're checking with. DEP on. The, any, any issues related to the lake to make sure that we can enforce those, that we. Master and my law says we have the right to regulate the Great Pond, but with their approval, um, so he is going to contact them, Mark Begling. Is going to contact them and just get the scope of what it is they would, what, at what level would they need to review it? Would they need to write it or just bless it? Basically, and, and make sure that's all good, but everything else in there, um, is. Good to go, so I can recirculate that to you all. With that one exception, we're just waiting for that back, or I can wait until I get that back from him, whatever you prefer.
Oh, I'd say wait.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's all I had for all. What's up, everybody?
Uh, a couple things. Uh, first of all, uh, huge congratulations and thanks for a great job by town hall staff. Especially a brand new town clerk, uh, Ms. Mayette. And treasure collector Jessica Menzone, but the entire. Uh, TCC and town hall staff, I, um, during the election last week or two weeks ago. Um, you know. Large, large turnout between early voting and in-person voting. You know, probably was a record total. I, I even saw the DPW guys out at town hall directing traffic, it was just a well-run operation, it. All reports that I heard was it was very smooth and. Um, and well-run, so thank you. And I'd also like to thank the American Legion. And the VFW for the, uh, and, um, our public safety folks for helping put on the. The Veterans Day Parade, it was very well attended, numerous people, uh, commented to me about how well attended it was for. Even though it was a holiday and the kids were off from school, it was very, very well attended. Um, the guest speaker was great as well, and it was just a well-run deal. Two items of note for internet. Whip City Fiber is connecting their first customers in West Springfield this week, um, the week of eleven twenty. And I see that, um. It was, someone sent it to me, Long Meadow voted, um, in their second meeting to bond and move forward with their. Uh, municipal fiber project. Um, and lastly, I don't know if we're carrying it on the agenda. We're, I, and I mentioned it in passing tonight a little bit about the assessor. We had talked about initially having. Um, about that position and having somebody, uh, join the Board of Assessor. Office or the assessor's office, sorry, the assessor's office. Ahead of ti- the time of the retirement of the assessor. Um. And I'd like to, to just reiterate my, my belief that we should post that role internally. Before posting or recruiting from outside the organization, I think it sends the right message to the staff at town hall. That is all, thank you.
Do you want to just mention the survey?
Oh, yeah, and one more thing. We were charged to send out, uh, a survey to. Anyone and everyone from the town of Southwick, uh, regarding to gauge interest and. Support for our own in, uh, municipal fiber project. Um, I've spoken about that ad nauseam here on this board. There's a thousand and million benefits to this project, it's expensive. It was the recommendation of the high-speed internet sub to come back to this board to put forth the warrant article to bond. To make a bond authorization for the entire project, so that the project can be. Gone into Eyes Wide Open with the, the known expense and. Have line of sight to completion, financial completion of the project. Um, to that end, this board recommended that we go back and do another survey, which, um. Nicole Parker and I have worked on, and it is gonna go live and we'll put the link right on the website.
Website, please, book.
It'll be everywhere, it's already on there. It went live this afternoon, so. Compelling everybody or asking everybody to, you know, indicate your interest to. To this board and to a future town meeting, hopefully that we want to go ahead and, and move ahead with that project. Thank you.
I just had one other thing, um, Mr. Giddy walked in the room late, um, and I just wanted to thank him for taking that second trip down to North Carolina. It was great, and the feedback he sent back was great. Thank you. Excellent, new list. Excellent, good. Um, and then we need to acknowledge and approve open session meeting minutes from ten twenty eight twenty four. And November fourth, twenty twenty four. Uh, roll call vote.
Jason, I.
Dan Gell, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
And executive session minutes from November four.
Make a motion to accept the minutes, executive session minutes of November four.
Second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Jason, I. Doug Morgan, yes.
You read that. And then we need to acknowledge payroll warrant twenty five ten dated eleven five twenty twenty four in the amount of two hundred and eighty six thousand, six twenty five ninety two. And payable warrant two five one three B dated eleven fourteen twenty twenty four in the amount of ten thousand, one forty five twenty five. And then we have no executive session, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn if.
Second.
Jason, I. Doug Morgan, yes.